Okay, once again, I'm late. For safety reasons, I need to make sure to it that my vehicle's secure, and then I don't lose my keys, and then I'm in there and this camera is rolling during the entire time I'm on the premises. It's gonna be a pain in the butt for using any bathroom and I gotta pee. And I'm all over the snow. Okay. We're already counting, thank God. Let's go ahead and get to that school board. This is the clock I showed in my earlier video. This is stuff that earns a lot of people like Ahmed Bundy work. This was restored by the class in 1967, and I'm pretty sure I had it in my last video. It looks like they've taken out the innards to make it work, and that's deeply disturbing, but so is me being late to the meeting to record it. I'm trying to find where that meeting is. Yeah, I'm late. They're starting. Excuse me, do you know where the school board meeting is? Do you know where the school board meeting is? Thank you. Okay, and I'm late again. That door is locked. Cross in public display.
Alright, we will move on to approval of the minutes. Why do you have any questions or comments about those?
I have a question. I'm just wondering, because there's five names on the thing and there's way more than five people in here. So if you guys not sign that...
So we don't sign the visitor guests because we are the board?
So I'm new here, so is there any way I could get all your guys' names? On a piece of paper?
To you afterwards.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, any questions on the minutes? Second. It's been properly moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? There are none, we'll proceed to vote, Lori, will you please take roll?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Make bet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes. Motion carries. Onto bills and financials of TGU School District. Anything additionally need to know or points we need to have points on? Okay. Anyone have any questions or comments on those? Not that I would agree with?
Yes, okay. So you'll see in the general manual, where it seems really high, usually at the end of the year, I do an adjustment to title funding, so we can close out our grant. However, we now have to submit the grant within a hundred and fifty expenditures, so I had to do some of those adjustments a little earlier. You'll probably see more title on the adjustments throughout the year.
Instead of one month.
Instead of one, did one again for the year.
Okay. If there's something else I would entertain a motion to approve those? Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the bills and financial report for TGU School District. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? There are none, we'll proceed to vote. Lori, will you please take roll?
Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Make bet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Onto bills and financials for Head Start. Is there anything? That's all in there? Okay.
Danny's alone with the dark hair and the, um, Dan sweater.
Now I would entertain a motion to approve. Is there a second? It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the bills and financial report for Head Start. Is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? There are none, we'll proceed to vote. Lori, will you please take roll?
Bailey?
Yes.
Make bet?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Carries. Onto old business, the playground fence project. Any questions? On that? So now it is currently just the materials only?
Actually, they're both, they're both, yeah.
Oh, is it both?
The one above is the one that includes labor, the one below, immediately below that item.
This is their code on the table?
Yes, that's, that's.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Or what the markup was, it is all right.
Any thoughts? On it? And they didn't, did they happen to say a timeline or anything?
Uh, we spoke. Late spring of summer.
Would you please speak up? You're hard to hear.
Is this something we could possibly do as a community project or not?
I'm afraid of being able to find enough labor in order to get the project addressed, because I'm, I'm thinking that it's gonna be a several day project. Because of that, our ability to get enough people to commit to it and get it completed. My biggest concern is we would get good turnout for the first couple days, but then like the finishing touches on the fence just wouldn't get handled before school would end up starting. I guess would be my biggest concern.
Or the days that would work for most of our workforce it rains. Or, you know, we wouldn't be as flexible. That's my concern too. I'm not, I'm not opposed to doing it as a community project, I just don't know.
I mean, we, we need to start thinking this way. I mean, on projects like this, it's a pretty, fairly good amount of money we're spending here. You know? Do you guys already have the equipment?
I think we could round it up, but, um, so I'm not sure if you've been to a meeting before.
Never.
Yeah, so there's, it's a meeting in public, not a public meeting, so you need to be addressed to be able to speak to the board and...
Thank you, tell me that, I didn't want it.
So, let's see, perhaps... So the differences are... I don't mind the idea of trying to gather troops and...
Be forty though, right? Oh, no, it's two options.
Right.
Yeah, if we go with six foot option, we're looking at...
Twenty seven though.
Yeah.
From the six foot option.
How would we go about rounding up people? Would we still get the material through them? Or...
I think we could say find, find, probably. I, I was just gonna throw it out there, because it's a fairly good sized expenditure on, you know...
Well, and it's a, I mean, it's a good sized project too, because then even if we do continue to order the materials through them, I mean, they know exactly, they know exactly how they're going to end up making it look, their measurements, how much materials can be used, for all of that stuff. I mean, you bring in somebody that's not experienced with that, and then if we have a mistake in there somewhere, then you're gonna, it's gonna result in how much more special or additional materials because mistakes were made on the project. I still think it would just be simpler in order to have the project completed by them if we want to go through them or try to obtain other bids, which we haven't been successful in doing.
Would you rather go on this, four foot or six foot?
I know building committee, we kind of thought six foot would be a little bit better just because kids might not be so hard on it as trying to just jump a four foot fence might be a little easier than a six foot.
I don't think it all has to be six foot go on both of those on backside.
Yeah.
By ground, ground, they all like think four foot would be fine. It's basically to keep it from easily accessing, jumping, you know, riding, running their cars through or whatever. Yeah, boundary balling, rolling down the street. It isn't, you're not gonna keep a kid in a six foot fence either if he wants to leave.
Yeah. We're not gonna shout so that you can hear us, I'm sorry. You can have a seat. So maybe we would want a combination of both, maybe?
One or two of each, but we just want some six feet. Six foot option?
Right.
Borders of street in Grandville would probably be better as a six, and then what goes on the back property lines and along by the trees would be better off as four, because like you said, it just isn't gonna have the traffic, it's not gonna have the people walking by it typically, it's not gonna have cars.
They're kicking around.
Yeah.
Yeah. Touche, touche.
I think we should start making some decisions on this, we've been looking at it for a couple meetings, so, yeah. So I guess we only have it in here as a four or a six, but we could probably change part of the option in Grandville to be partly four foot and not all six, but...
Now that, if we did that, a majority of it would be, a majority of the fence would be four foot then if we changed it to the back perimeter and then just had like from the east end of the elementary school down towards Main Street and then back along that property line by those tall cottonwoods, if that was six feet long, the main street border and then everything else be four feet, I think we would save it.
Yeah, that saves us a decent amount.
It's a little waste of energy.
And still be efficient.
Yeah. And then in Towner, like he said, because you're still dealing with garbage trucks, you're dealing with a lot of traffic from food trucks and everything else coming along this backside of the playground over here, so it might be just as well to have it as a six foot option all the way around.
Is there a setback since that's a county road?
It would probably have to be what, thirty feet from the center?
Sixty is, uh, it's thirty-three feet from the center.
Oh, that's just something we have to...
They should.
Right.
Yeah, they would. Yeah.
So, yeah, with included perimeter, it probably would be easiest and most efficient to go with having Legacy do it all? Do we have a motion to go forward with it?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the full six foot fence in Towner, and then, um, what I talked about, the four foot option on the backside of the property in Grandville, and then remainder, project be six foot border in the streets.
Okay, is there a second? Okay, it's been properly moved and seconded to move forward. Approve Legacy Fence's bid for the Playground Fencing Project to do a full six foot in Towner, and six foot in Grandville except for the south, east and west line against the trees, that would be four feet. Is there any discussion?
Are we sure this is what you want to do?
I think so. I mean, we've made the adjustments and brought it to the board about what we were looking for for a perimeter and everything. I think I feel comfortable with the way the fence lays out. It doesn't, there isn't anything for us to move that's in the way with the current perimeter we have, so... I think it's a good idea.
I'm surprised we haven't had to do this prior to now. Myself? Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? There are none, we'll proceed to vote. Lori, will you please take roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Kramer?
I'm voting.
Second?
Yep.
Motion carries. Onto school board election. Do we have some updates for us?
Okay, so, to the question that you asked, we've just split the votes in time, and yes, we can do that. So if that is something you want to do, we can do that. At all times, though, we have to have a detailed schedule to hold on to the inspectors and the board. I think the question transitioned where they're not interfering with any of the election day activities. Of course, a couple other questions. We do have this to put as well. After the election, observers, I just want to make sure I had my facts right. As far as, if an observer should have, I'm willing to videotape the election because of older, when you go to vote, you have to give your name and your address. Well, I wanted to make sure I had my facts correct when, um, if that, that were ever to come up at an election polling site. And Amy said that, um, we can have a designated area for the election observer to be. Um, as far as videotaping goes, um, it is our job to preserve the voter's privacy. So, um, an election observer has the right to observe the process, but there is no protection law that allows them to record the process. So, and they absolutely, under no circumstance, can interfere with the election day process. So, I guess my advice to the inspectors when I do the training would be that, not to allow videoing within the voting area where voter information is being provided to the judges and clerks, you know, their address and that information. Yeah, personal information, so. Um, and then other things that I wanted to kind of just discuss, give updates on with the election. So, going back to the absentee ballot application, and one thing I wanted to say, if any of you have somebody who says they didn't get their ballot from me, but they received the county's, have them get ahold of me, uh, so that, you know, we can make sure they're getting my ballot as well. You know, that's the only way that, I'm, I'm not gonna know that they put in an application with the counties unless the county sends it to me, so. I did get the American Legion Hall reserved. Um, the candidacy filing was published in the paper on the twenty-first, the twenty-eighth. Um, it's going to be published again this week, um, the twentieth, the twenty-seventh, and then again on April third. Um, again, a reminder that application due dates for candidates is four eight by four P M. Um, and then if you as the board could really kind of look at who I had on that spreadsheet, because I'm going to be asking you at the next meeting to provide me a list of things that you would like me to be hiring, okay, so that I can get that on the books and get those people locked in, so.
Could you send that to us again, or is it in our, in the...
It's in last month's packet, but I will send it to you guys again.
Okay.
Thank you.
Have you advertised in Grandville Gazette for poll workers for the Grandville site?
For poll workers?
Yeah.
No, I did not.
Well, I think that'd be a good idea.
For poll workers?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want me to also see if she'll publish like the candid, candid, I can't talk? You know, all, all of my other, um, due date ones. Okay. Hold on. Don't move, I tell you.
Yep, that's okay.
Okay. And that was all, I just wanted to give updates.
Sure. Any other questions on the elections so far? Lori? Nope. Okay. Alright, we'll move on to new business, starting with our high school dance.
Um, my name is Anna Drager, and I am a grader at TGU Grandville.
I am Ann Baldrager, I'm a seventh grader at TGU Grandville. We are here to present to the board information on N D A D D, or North Dakota State Street Asian Dance and Drill. We make the TGU School Board to consider adding a Dance and Drill team to the extracurriculars offered to TGU. And then also there's like history on Dance and Drill in our package too. N D A D D currently has seven plus schools, schools that compete in the state's code. Um, Barnes County North, Carrington, Central Lake, Harrison, Hazen, Biola, and Northern Cass are the seven schools. There is no minimum requirement for team members. National Class B team will have five to ten dancers, both female and males, are allowed to compete. There's not junior high divisions. Um, students grades in grade seven through twelve can participate together. Um, the competition season for N D A D D is November through January. Teams can begin practice as soon as schools allow. Minna High, for examples, for example, begins learning choreography in August, September, and then if a team were to attend a national convention, that would take place in February, March. Fees to become an N D A D D school is a hundred dollars per team per year. This fee includes a mandatory fall coaches conference in October. N D A D D state competition registration ranges from three hundred to seven hundred dollars. This includes a required media fee of fifty dollars, then each category of dance has a fee starting at two fifty and adding a hundred dollars with each category. Uh, invitationals hosted by individual schools that set their own fees. Those fees are unknown to us until we get invited to the invitational. These invitationals are often hosted in Bismarck, Mandan, Fargo, Jamestown, and Melissa. So there's five categories that you could compete in. There's high kick, which is a dance that one foot remains on the floor and the other one lifts up, often creates a straight line. I want to be as uniform as possible to create clean lines. And then there's pom, which is, this dance is kind of like a cheer line from corn with pom poms. Uh, the next is jazz, which is a high-energy dance that features improvisation. And then hip-hop is like a great dance performed to hip-hop music. And then novelty. This is often contemporary, early, or folk, and focused on telling a story. Teams can compete in one category or all five. The requirements for the categories can be found in the poll, policies and procedures on in the progress page. Here's a couple things that the school can help to support the dancers' own skills. Uh, schools can help by covering registration costs, transportation, uniforms, and coach's salary. Uh, schools can allow teams to perform at events such as halftime games, follow them out on social media, announce the upcoming competitions, just to make a few things. The school and pitches pitch it as another extracurricular that is offered to the school, adding more opportunities for our students. The team can help support cause by fundraising. Teams can fundraise by supporting both community and other miscellaneous programs throughout the year. We would like TGU to consider at becoming an N D A D D member and adding Dance and Drill to extracurriculars. This will allow us to compete representing TGU. We currently dance competitively for a recreational studio. Having a dance team will also allow us to compete for our own school and our training community. We feel that this will give us confidence and feel the support for our, from our community, for our passion, allowing us, allowing by, also by being a member, it holds us as students accountable, becoming the N D A D D follows the same eligibility guidelines as N D H S A. Students will be able to represent TGU at more competitions. It also allows TGU to give more offerings to multiple students with their interests. Thank you for allowing us to present TGU and consider offering Dance and Drill. Um, so, and please stand for any questions.
Anybody have any question?
Do you know how many students would be interested in the program currently? Outside of three young ladies.
So, um, I, when I first heard that, um, N D A D D was looking for more class fees to become members and compete, I, on my personal Facebook page, posted... I, on my personal Facebook page, posted the question, you know, if there would be any, there was, um, probably was a lot of interest in it, um, even when I went to the N D A D D page, it was probably the shared post that had the most interest. Um, I do know that there's several girls over here in town that currently are gymnasts. Um, which would, they transition really easily into dance. Um, you know, they're elementary girls right now that I know, but I never did put out a survey to the district, so.
When would we need to get papers in, you know, if we were to decide to do it? When is that registration due, or when does forms need to be filled out to make sure that we're ready for the fall seasons?
Yeah, so they, um, they just have to know before the October conference.
Okay, so we've got some time to maybe put out some feelers to see if there would be a decent amount of interest?
Is this something that, if we wanted to, until it gained a little bit more traction, some of our neighboring districts such as Delver, Drake, Anos, would we want to co-op with some of those to find some opportunities there as well to maybe build a program? Is that something that?
You could. You would probably be hosting the co-op. Um, there's only seven, seven schools in class B right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, and Minut, I know Minut won't co-op with us because we've asked.
Tried that.
Well, I was just thinking from like a class B perspective, you know, Delver doesn't have enough kids, but they would be interested. I mean, I don't think our facilities have any problem hosting a sports co-op like that, I wouldn't think, but, um.
I would think first we could look at individually, since it's not a team thing, whereas we have however many girls want to participate, right? It's not a certain, you don't have five people on the floor, you know, so, um, and then if they would want to co-op with us, then we, we could, you know.
I was just saying, I was just thinking of some additional opportunities for the kids too.
Yeah.
Another thing is finding a coach, setting the salary.
Yeah. Do we have a coach?
We might have someone in mind.
We probably do have a coach, salary I can't help you with. But I'm pretty sure I actually might have three people who are past dancers. Two of them live within our community and one, one of the kids, um, studio owner. Alright.
I actually was at the state competition and she had a granddaughter that did that, so it was pretty interesting. And there isn't many class B schools.
So.
No, I think there's only four that actually competed at state.
Would you guys need a space to, like, practice stuff?
We could just do it on like the gym floor.
Yeah, okay.
Any other special equipment we would need, like, because it's not gymnastics, right? So we don't need like tumble mats extras or anything?
No, no, they, um, I guess to learn tricks, maybe they would need like math and stuff, but they just use like what they use in the gym.
Okay.
If there's things for them. Yeah.
Okay, so it would really, I mean, to be hon- so the cost basically to us would be the registration, the startup fee, right? From the hundred dollars per year per team. And then, any competitions to go to those registrations.
Don't we have like a leftover cheerleading on that?
Uh, yeah, so there, it was a, what is it called, like a spirit, you know, like tank spirit or tank cheer or something like that. I'm not, I don't know where I have to talk my head because I've never used it since I've been here. Um, I think there is some funds still in there. And then, um, when I was at the regional tournament, I seen some girls pulling some uniforms out of a tub. And I was like, oh, uniforms, check.
Yeah, those too. It's like, whoa, I haven't seen those in years.
So, um, yeah, you know, and I don't think, I think at this point, um, I don't know, I may be speaking for them. They wouldn't really care about having to wear old costumes as long as they could compete.
And normally it is like cheer costumes that are cheered, you know, that's what they were, okay? Um, and then, you know, we would have halftime entertainment maybe for basketball games, things like that maybe, so.
It's an opportunity.
I think it's a great opportunity, to be honest. So, and then, like you guys said, it opens the door for some other students who maybe aren't into the other current sports that we offer. This might be another avenue for them. Um, do we want to make a motion about it now? Or do we want to kind of think about it a little bit more, maybe solidify some more interests? And then, look at it again? Maybe, um, and say, I suppose you guys can start in Au- in August, practice, right? When the school starts, so we could look at it in June maybe, or I guess it's a, I don't, it doesn't matter to me, I'm, I'm all for it, so.
Yeah, I'm the same old.
I think that we do need to come up with a salary and actually get some numbers, I guess. And see how many kids are actually going to be interested in that.
Would we be able to find out kind of what a base coach salary would be for a dance coach? I don't know if they vary from, you know, that much different from another sport, or I don't, I don't know where we would start. So I guess that would be a question I would have to.
Can we reach out to another school and just see what they have?
Just a cost of people to us.
Put some feelers out for, I think that would be good, and we can report back next month then, and, okay? Sounds good, thank you ladies.
Thank you.
Okay, we can move on to item B, contracts. Any questions on those, otherwise we just need to approve those.
We need approval of the principal and the teacher contracts.
None of them, that are separate, right? And the non-licensed?
Uh, the non-licensed stuff we don't need.
No, I meant, right, the non-licensed and the extracurriculars right here, um, F Y I's.
F Y I's, yeah.
See, one was old.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I need that conversation on that.
So, on the, uh, contracts that are presented, we can start with the teacher contracts first, their motion to approve those.
I'll make a motion to approve the teacher contracts.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we're probably moved and seconded to approve the teacher contracts that are presented, is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Uh, maybe ask two in that.
Oh, did I, I did the same ones? Hmm, shoot. I had to correct hers, so, I might be.
Did I see the one where there's, uh, the years crossed out corrected on the?
Yeah, so. Um, okay. Thank you.
Oh, seconded.
Yeah, so the correct one is the one that doesn't have the years crossed out. Yeah, sorry, thanks for catching that, I obviously was just splitting them into three.
We're just gonna pay her.
She's not doing good. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to approve the teacher contracts as presented, it's also been seconded. Is there any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote on the teacher contracts, please take roll, Lori. Johnson? Yes. Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Motion carries on to.
There's, under that same heading, two letters of resignation that I would like to have.
You have that summer, are, are, does that teacher's contract include the summer contracts? And then you have principal contracts.
Right, yeah, I was, sorry. Going to do the, go to the principal contracts? Is it, well, I guess, do you guys want to do a separate one for the summer contracts?
I, my intention was to leave those in, I guess, I should have said summer and calendar. The regular contracts and summer contracts, when I approved teachers, I meant both.
You meant both?
In that motion, I guess that was my intent.
We should go back and do it the right.
Okay.
We'll just do it as a separate one then.
Yeah, we can do it as a separate one.
Would you like to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll move to approve the summer contracts.
It's a motion to approve the teacher's summer contracts, is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we're probably moving seconded to approve the summer contracts of teachers, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, Lori, will you please take roll? Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson? Yes. Motion carries, okay, on to principal contracts.
It's just the one?
Yes, that I had this morning in my hand.
Any, have a, uh, motion to approve that contract?
Motion to approve that contract.
Is there a second?
I'll hear it.
Uh, it's been properly moved and seconded to approve the principal contract that has been presented, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, Lori, will you please take roll? Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Motion carries. Okay, resignation letters, is that what you wanted?
There are two.
Okay, number nine and nine point one. I finally got it, yes, okay. Um, okay, you want them separately or together?
You can do.
Okay, so you have two letters of resignation in there?
I move to approve the resignation letter.
It's a motion to approve both resignation letters as presented, is there a second?
Second.
So we're probably moving seconded to approve the resignation letters, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, Lori, will you please take roll? Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, so we can move on to P I I request? Okay, uh, and with the American Heart Association.
So, Ms. Felwer actually brought in, uh, Helen Coates, I believe, who's trained our students in CPR. And so, they can get certified, they need to go online, um, to the website she listed there. It's American Heart Association, they can actually get their CPR credentials, so, uh, we need approval to create those accounts for students. Motion for that.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
So we're probably moving seconded to approve the P I I requests through the American Heart Association, is there any discussion? Any discussion?
Are all these requests reviewed yearly? So there's not like some that were done like twenty years ago, or ten years ago, that are still out there that have nothing to do with our, maybe it's just your opinion?
No, once they're approved, they, it's a standing document that's, but they sit there. And you could go through them, um, it's actually in our policy manual, if you want to take a look at it, but, no, I haven't pulled any of those websites out.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, Lori, will you please take roll? Macbeth?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Motion carries, on to item D, superintendent eval. That is in your, um, whatever it's called, folder. Sorry, I didn't push send when I originally drafted the email to send to you guys. So it got a little tight on the schedule, only gave you a week this time, but, um, I have a motion to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
So we're probably moving seconded to approve the superintendent eval, is there any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll proceed to vote, Lori, will you please take roll? Johnson?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Sedlin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yeah.
Macbeth?
Yes.
Motion carries. Alright, we're on to reports.
Okay, um, got a couple of things, um, before I kind of launch into it, um, just want to point out, I did put a link in the report to a, what I find interesting anyway. Committee meeting at state legislature about, um, school spending, so if you're interested at all, take a look at that. Kind of a lengthy day, but, um, I think there was some information there. Reminder of the school board training that's coming up in two weeks on the twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth, that takes place at the Miguel Acate Center in Granville. Um, run from nine to five, lunch is provided, actually everything required outside of you guys is provided, so we'll have paper, pens, all of that. So, um, kind of a long day, but I've heard some positive feedback about it, um, some other school districts, so hopefully it's a good training.
Are we gonna opt to that to the applicants or native?
It's a, it's an open meeting of the board, so, and technically anybody who wants to attend is welcome. Outside of that.
I was just wondering if.
Yeah.
We're getting, we might get a new, I guess we will be getting a new board.
Yeah, it's, it's open.
Whoever is running.
Yep, if someone's interested in running, they should, I mean, I would encourage them to attend, could be, good. Um, a couple of other items real quickly, uh, fire marshal swings by both of our facilities this Wednesday. Um, let's see, what else do we have here? Uh, last week, I know it's mentioned in our, in our, uh, administrative reports, but I just kind of wanted to draw attention to it. Our kids went up the bottom for what was a T four training. They did some tools, it stands for Tools, Trade, Torque, and Tech. Uh, what, what it really was, was hands-on learning experiences for kids, kind of some career exposures things. Um, the reason I mention that is that's something that I'd like to see, um, if we can come up with a creative way to kind of infuse that a little bit more into our curriculum at T G U. I think, um, we do a good job with classroom stuff, it'd be nice to let our kids maybe explore what options they have to stay in our communities and work here. And so I just wanted to kind of mention that. Um, the E T S project, real quickly, uh, when I called down there for an update, they said they were still kind of working on their end. And at this point, we've been bounced back to late spring and early summer for that transition, so, um, probably will not be able to take advantage of that this heating season. Um, kind of gazing forward, I, I put these off until April because of our training at the end of March, but we'll have a calendar. Uh, we'll start to work on that, we'll approve that next month. Um, and then we'll get a look at our early budget, you guys asked for information on that. So as these contracts roll in, we can plug them into a, you know, kind of a projected budget for next year, you guys can kind of take a look at that. Should have the vast majority of that done, um, at least salary-wise, by our April budget, so. Um, lastly, on the kind of planning thing, it's a even-numbered year, so we do our long-range planning on the even years. They remove that as a natural requirement at the state level. My recommendation is that we still do it, it's a fairly painless process. But it is where you guys kind of look at all of the course offerings and decide if you want to add something, or if, you know, something's not being taken about, or we can take it back. And with that, we'll also start then at that point, looking at a cybersecurity plan, which is something that we need to do for the district. Um, kind of working with administration, we've done a lot of, a lot of, uh, creative thinking about that, but we need to kind of start working with the board and make sure that we're all rowing in the same direction on some of those projects. And then finally, on Friday, it was brought to my attention by quite a few different community members, actually, um, that we were mentioned on Facebook post by a politician in state, uh, Mr. Jason Heitkamp. Um, he put out there some dubious information about our district spending. In fact, accused the district of overspending, um, increased spending, I should say, by two and five thousand dollars per student. Um, I did put today, um, into our board's packet, a memorandum that kind of responds to that information. Um, I tried today to figure out where the number that he put together came from. Uh, I was not, not able to really identify where those numbers, what the derivative for that was. Um, the fact of the matter is, we actually reduced spending two years ago by three hundred dollars per student. And then last year, we went down another two twenty-five per student. So our overall cost per student has gone down each of the last two years. This year, we actually reduced our overall tax, uh, requests to our patrons, and so, um, the idea that somehow we've increased by a third of our chanc- the idea that somehow we've increased by a third of our general fund, uh, is wholly inaccurate. So, I wanted to make sure that you as, as a board were aware that that happened, and you also had the accurate information that our spending is actually going down, not going up. So, um, if you have any questions about that, or certainly if anybody has questions that they direct towards you, feel free to direct them back to my office, because, um, that is not, that is not accurate, so.
Did you letter something you'd be willing to put in the paper, like a letter to the editor, just so that people can see it?
If you'd like me to do that, I, I.
I think it would, I think it would be worthwhile, just because some people, even if they have a concern, we're not able to answer, they may not.
Yeah.
Reach out to you, it's just public information, because everybody gets to see it on Facebook.
I could do that, the other option, just kind of as an FYI, if you want, I could do it now, or you could, I really wouldn't have an opportunity to have a motion at the board, but, um. How about this, I, I will plan to do that, if you have any concerns with what I wrote, you can read it in the, um, packet, just let me know by Friday, because that's when I will submit it to the newspaper, so.
I'm good with everyone? Anything else for your report?
Uh, that should about, about do it.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you. Uh, we will go back up to our Town or Granville's student board members. Ty, I'm assuming is in the, um, banquet, so you're up?
All right, so I honestly don't have that much to say this month. Our conferences are coming up really fast, which I think is really beneficial for our younger kids, because they get to push forward where they want to be and what they want to do as they grow, and beneficial for us, as well as we get to build our resumes and work towards, um, being adults. I haven't seen that in the rubric before until like last year and this year, so I thought that was really awesome, that we are kind of pushing that, that it's important that you have this, and that you document your volunteer hours, and your shadowing, and everything like that. Our elementary goes basketball starts, which is awesome. I did basketball when I was very little, did not stay with it, but, but I do think it's really. I tried. I do think it's really good that we're pushing our students out there and getting them, um, excited about extracurriculars and sports in general, because it is such a big part of our community. And then we have our pictures, which I like getting pictures of my siblings. And then we have our break coming up, so it'll be nice to take a breath and then keep chugging on and finish off this year as strong as we can.
All right, thank you. Um, so when Ty is out, you have his report in there. Uh, we can move on to Town or High School and Elementary, but we'll just get Elementary tonight.
Yes, I have a lot to add. We did start our basketball season for girls tonight. That was good, um, and then Jerry Coates has so generously offered to help me too, so that is wonderful. And then we have two high school athletes that are also helping us, and it's, it was wonderful, so. Um, and it's fun to see all the girls coming together, and, um, they have a lot of skill out there, so it's fun to see that. And then our discovery fair is just, uh, it's next week, uh, at one thirty here at our elementary. Um, and the kiddos had to do a research project, um, with it and writing, and so it was really fun to see third graders writing a five paragraph, um, five paragraphs, it was pretty impressive, so they were proud of me, and then that'll help them get ready for their state testing, um, too. So, that's all I have right now, unless you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Ms. Hildebrand? All right, thank you. Mrs. Wallstead, you're up.
All right, uh, let's focus on our new approach or new initiative, the no tight left behind, the one I mentioned last month. In two weeks, a hundred and nineteen missing assignments were completed, and now we've well over exceeded two hundred and fifty missing assignments. So, Mrs. Wall and Mrs. Aberley are a hundred percent committed, as well as all of our teachers, of making sure that our students are learning more and completing missing assignments. So, grades are, are improving, our ineligible list is decreasing, so, um, we're very pleased with that. Mrs., uh, Ms. Hildebrand, Mr. Lee and I are attending the MSU, uh, Education Career Fair on March nineteenth, hopefully to recruit amazing substitute teachers and teachers. And then tomorrow's big event is our district, um, talent show and creative show and share. So, we have seven or eight acts for talent, and then we have teachers and staff and students who are participating in their creative show and share. So, that's tomorrow night at six thirty, if you're available, and there's free popcorn.
Free popcorn.
Yeah, yeah.
Any questions for Mrs. Wallstead? Okay, thank you. Okay. Um, Allison's not, did she have anything she passed along to you?
She didn't have anything.
Okay. Our next item of business is to set our next meeting then. So. The second Wednesday of April would be the tenth? Does that work for everyone?
Yeah. I'm good with that.
I'm sorry, I was busy talking.
Yeah, your chatter's over there.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, the tenth would be the second Wednesday, which is what our stated meeting is supposed to be. Does that work for Terry?
Yeah, Grandville.
Does that work for you?
Yeah, okay.
I think we can go a little bit later. Yeah.
Or you guys want?
Seven, seven more? Or six thirty, or what?
Later the better.
Okay. You have the furthest travel from work, so. Joe, what's gonna work with you? Seven? So, seven o'clock on the tenth, does that work for you guys?
Question, do you, would anybody be opposed to a special meeting on the twenty-fifth of March? After our board training that day? That way, we could approve the rest of the TG contracts. It would be a one-item agenda. Oh. What do we need to do on Tuesday? So, I will just put it at five o'clock on that day, and then we'll have that single item agenda.
Okay, so, it's April tenth at seven in Granville for our monthly meeting, and then the twenty-fifth at five PM right after our training is concluded for the day? Okay, and that will be for contract. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All right, you're adjourned, thank you, everybody.
If you're adjourned, we can speak now, right?
Yep, our meeting is adjourned.
Okay, so where's the location of the special meeting?
Uh, it will be at the, uh, Community Center in Granville.
Granville Community Center, is that the seniors, senior center, or is it the city hall?
The Community Center, the senior center.
It's the Community Center.
Okay, the one where they have all the parties?
I need to assign.
Oh, yeah.
Do you want blue pen or black pen?
Um, other important things, um, part, those of us who are trying to observe the polls. Is there a way I can set up a time to talk to you?
What would you like to talk about?
Mostly what I talked about when I was interviewing you for the election on the phone.
I know, I, you're gonna have to remind me, that was over a year ago.
Yeah, I don't blame you. I will in a minute, but I gotta catch her about the polls. And then I gotta go ahead and get my butt over to Granville for their city hall meeting. So, I, I'm not sure if I saved your contact information.
You can get that from the school.
Which state office?
I believe it's like Maury and, and that now are.
Gran, in Granville or Town or?
Both should have.
Okay, um, hey, hold on a minute. As far as poll watching goes, nobody wants the personal information of the voters, and you're right, it is your duty to hide it. But we do want to see when the ballots are turned in, they are anonymized, and the part that we're interested in is the handling of the ballots the minute the voters turn them in. We don't have to see what they voted for.
You can observe, but you cannot record it.
You're telling me that I can't record any portion of it?
That is the advice of the attorney that I spoke with, yes.
From what I understood, we, uh, we were supposed to be allowed to record it.
Okay, well, the attorney that I spoke with said that there's nothing in law that says you get to record that. The only safe protection in law is that you can observe.
Okay.
So, I am going by the advice of my attorney. If you want to.
May I get the name of the attorney?
Absolutely, it was Amy DeCook with the North Dakota School Board Association.
Hold on a minute, I need to write that down. Can you spell, um, A M Y spelled regular, right?
I honestly don't know the spelling of her name off the top of my head, ma'am. I believe it's A M Y.
Okay.
D E K U K, I believe, but I'm not a hundred percent on that.
U K.
She is.
Of the North Dakota School Board?
North Dakota School Boards Association.
N D S C H O O L B O A R D S A S S O I T I O N. Okay, and so you did not speak with her personally, or, uh, email her any kind of questions?
I did email her, yes.
Okay, and she's the one that's advising you that there cannot be cameras in any part of the area?
Yes, she said that the protection in law is to observe, there is no protection in law to record.
Actually, um, one of the things that they credit President Trump's victory in the first primary for was they were supposed to have had the ballots counted on national TV on camera.
Okay.
So, other states may have different rules.
Counting of the ballots?
Uh-huh.
I'm talking about.
I was discussing the counting of the ballots.
Yep, okay, but you didn't say that, ma'am.
Yes, I did, I said the specific custody when they become anonymous.
But they're not counted at the time that they're put into the ballot box. Counting ballots when they are coming in and voting, but when I come in and vote, I give them my name, my information.
I understand that part.
Vote, and I put it into the election box.
That's the part where I want the cameras, when you put it in the election box, as long as you don't show it to me.
In the same area, it's in the exact same area.
You might want to separate the area.
No, we can't, we can't, we cannot separate it.
This isn't a one-room schoolhouse.
Here's what I'm going to do, ma'am. Because you don't believe me, you can contact the North Dakota Secretary of State. You are welcome to do that, they, they oversee all elections in the state of North Dakota. I will no longer answer any further questions on that.
T E R.
Because you don't want to believe what I say.
Well, it's not just that.
I'm not going to, I'm tired of.
Ma'am, you are making assumptions. I said that we have enough room to separate the area from where the person obtains the ballot to where the person turns in the ballot.
By the way, that the law states that the election is set up, we are unable to do that.
They have to be in the exact same room?
Be in the same area, and if you have more questions, you can contact the state on that. We are just doing what we are told and what the law requires.
So, Amy DeCook of the School Boards Association works for the North Dakota Secretary of State or their separate office?
Nor, Amy DeCook is the lawyer of the school district that I re, posed the question to. The Secretary of State is the lawyer for the state of North Dakota that, well, I don't even know if he's a lawyer. But that is the office that oversees elections, so if you have further questions on elections, I suggest that you call them.
Yes, I do, because I, I understand you're right, they do have the right to protect their, uh, personal information as far as residents, but when I voted before, I've noticed that the areas where we get our ballots are separate from the areas where we turn in our ballots. And it's very easy for the person with the camera to remain outside of that area, and they're using simple things like tape to basically, uh, cordon off areas so that we're at, it, it, they're, I mean, so that people know to stay out. Tape on the floor, they're doing it right now with the bars and the gambling machines.
We're not a barroom.
Yeah, no.
Further questions, you can talk to the state of North Dakota.
That's a for instance, and you know it.
You can contact the state of North Dakota.
Um, yeah, I know. I will if I don't get sick again.
Okay.
I still want to ask questions about the school buses, and, um, you might want to consider not buying fences if you can't afford the spending. This is crazy. Um, by the way, um, do you want me to make an open records request about Macbeth's contact information, or may I have it?
I actually, um, people's personal information is not subject to open records.
Well, that was a fun, like, Macbeth told me, because he told me to contact you.
I can't, I can give you the email, you're talking about Mr. Macbeth here that was sitting here?
Yes, the school board.
You his, the email that the school issued him?
Yes.
I'll give you that, okay. I cannot give you information, his personal information. That is not something I can do.
Okay, and I'll try to get in touch with you about the USB drive, I'm sorry, the COVID had me knocked flat. Every time I pushed myself to get stuff done, I wound up having to stay home and do a day's bed rest afterwards.
Yep, well, I've had it available for you, so as soon as you have that, you know where to find me.
Yeah. Speaking of which. Yeah. And I need to make, I need to make it a priority, too, to get this, these videos posted, so people can comment on them and take information. It's a great way for citizens to give feedback. And I'm not sorry, this is such an important thing for freedom. By the way, I noticed that clock is completely taken apart and not working. No, not that one, the one that's in the hall that the class of nineteen sixty-seven put together.
Yep, it's being fixed.
Okay, are the students doing it, or is somebody else?
It's actually a volunteer in town here that is fixing it, yep.
Well, I'm glad to know you're not terrorizing him like you did me.
I am not terrorizing you, I answered your question, and you keep.
Yeah. Well, um, as far as.
Meeting is over, you can feel free to leave, please. If you have another question.
Um, yeah, I was just curious, are they doing it in a way that the students can observe and learn from the work? Because if at all possible.
Because the volunteer is doing it on his own time, he's using his own money to fix the clock. No, it's.
Well, no, I don't want to be.
He's not coming in during the school day.
I.
I'm answering your question, you don't let me finish answering your question ever.
Okay, um, I'll let you go on then and take as much time as you want.
What else do you want?
Well, you're not, I, I didn't mean to make it sound mean, it's just, I was kind of thinking it'd be kind of cool to see if he couldn't, you know, sort of, uh, work with somebody to put it up as to what he did to fix the clock, that way students can see it and maybe learn.
You know, that's his prerogative, ma'am. He's a volunteer.
No, yeah, I understand.
Have to do anything he doesn't want to do.
Exactly.
Yep.
And I don't want to put an on dear burden on him, it was just a, it was just a suggestion to be helpful.
Yep, yep, he's a volunteer, it's on his own time, you know, I know he is busy during the day and during school time, and so, I guess because he's doing this out of the kindness, it's hard, I'm not going to ask him to do even more.
No, I understand, and.
And that's really not my place either to ask him.
No, it was just a friendly suggestion about seeing if there wasn't a way they could turn it into a learning experience, since the, the, uh, basic, uh, automation of that clock, uh, still, uh, most of the principals are there for robotics. A lot of the robots act in a, I mean, act and work in a similar way that the mechanisms in that clock does. It was just simple thinking, um, it's part of, uh, basic mechanical engineering, and it's been going on since, um, I don't know how long, at least medieval times.
Melissa, she has answered your questions, can you please go? The meeting is over.
This is quite a bit of hate.
There is nothing left for us to be doing, so.
Well, you're still doing it.
Barrage her with questions.
Barrage? You just seem angry when I'm asking any kind of question.
Well, quite honestly, I'm a little frustrated with you, because you have called me multiple times within the last two weeks to ask me the same exact question. Nobody has ever stopped you from videoing the school board meeting, you.
You mean to confirm meeting times and areas?
I have never stopped you from recording me, you were at the meeting when the board set the date, set the time, and you keep calling me. I am a very busy person. I've, I am the business manager for two.
Well, I am totally okay with showing up.
Employees. It's, you know, I don't have a lot of time to be answering the same question multiple times, it's the exact same answer. So, I am frustrated with you, I am very frustrated with you.
These are not the exact same questions, and you know it.
You did ask me the exact same question. Am I able to come to the school board meeting with my cameras, anybody going to harass me? Nobody's going to harass you, yes, you can come to the school board meeting with your camera. What is the date and time of the school board?
You mean confirming the date and time that it has not changed or moved?
It does not change and move, the only time they cha- they change it here at the meeting, if they need to.
And you were. Yes, so that was what I was verifying it.
Time.
And they can't change it due to an emergency? It's not always posted until after it takes place, it wasn't this fall.
It is always posted on the calendar, on the. By law, it has to be posted before the meeting so that the community is able to know. It is always posted on the.
Well, wasn't there a week before the meeting or a few days before the meeting? I need to make sure I knew where.
Requirement on how soon in advance of the board meeting has to be posted, but it is always posted. It is posted, like, it may not be posted the same night as the board meeting because I like to go home to my family, but the very next day it is posted onto the school calendar.
After it's taken place?
After the school board meeting.
Has taken place, so that creates a problem with me recording it.
After the meeting, so tonight, we set our next month's meeting.
Uh huh.
So tomorrow, next month's meeting will be posted.
That's a pleasant change from this last fall when I couldn't find it.
Always been done. Stop lying and putting out false information.
I'm not putting out false information, I checked your webpage.
Listening to answers and you repeat the same question.
Um, nice try.
See yourself out.
Well, yeah, the educator's right, it's pretty obvious they're hiding something. I'm out of my league, but I've got my camera to do records, better people can put the pieces together, no matter what happens to me. I really don't like the harassment either, it is perfectly legal for me to call. By the way, part of our call was about the, me getting the information on a USB drive prior to the meeting. Part of our call was me getting the information on a USB drive prior to the meeting.
I'm sorry?
Part of our call was about me getting the minutes prior to the meeting.
Yeah, I have them, they're on my computer, if you give me a USB, I will download them to the USB. You want them in audio form, if you want them in paper form, I will go copy them right now.
Uh huh.
And you will give me twenty-five cents per page.
Which I, which, once again, we discussed on the phone that I didn't have a USB drive with me.
Okay, then how am I supposed to give them to you if you don't?
Well, you were complaining about me asking the same questions.
We do not need to provide you with a USB, that is a cost of the district.
No kidding, I never said you had to.
Well.
Yes, because you don't wanna answer questions that are pertinent to this stuff.
I'll ask you questions, what's your question? No question?
It's not no questions, um, I need to reschedule stuff because I caught COVID a week after the meeting.
Okay, what are you gonna reschedule, Melissa?
Well, I need to reschedule with you people as soon as I'm done moving and I do need your contact information, I also need theirs. Um, as far as the emails go, it sounds like I need to start asking the questions in writing if I'm gonna receive this kind of harassment.
There you go.
Um, is that your email?
No, that's my phone number.
What's your email?
Okay, I can put my email on that.
And would you please give the principal's email too?
For which facility, Melissa?
Both.
Both? Hey, you can get this on the website.
I'm glad, I'm glad I can, can you please differentiate between the facilities too? Or would you please, I guess it'd be more polite to ask.
As in differentiate what?
Which email goes to which facility?
I got you.
And the school offices are open till what time?
We typically have someone in the office till three forty-five.
Okay, um, in this facility?
Yep.
Okay, the one in Granville is open what hours?
Uh, there'll typically be somebody in the office till about, well, I would say same, till four, but I'd consider it to be say three forty-five.
Then, um, the, uh, uh, posting that the office was open till four thirty is a new, uh, set of hours?
The office is not open till four thirty, we have people in the facility till four thirty.
So, in the facility immediately outside the office?
Sure.
Then why did you say the school office hours had been open till four thirty the last time?
You got me on that one. I'm not sure what you're hiding, but when did we have that conversation?
Um, last school more meeting February thirteenth, I've got it on camera.
Okay, perfect, I'm just trying to be helpful for you.
Yeah, well, it is crucial about knowing the hours, not only for calling, but calling in person if necessary. And as far as it goes, from now on, when I'm on school property, I wanna have the camera running at all times for safety reasons.
Okay, that's fine, concerned for your safety?
Well, considering the, uh, false, uh, the misinformation you guys spread about me.
What's that?
Maybe you oughta go ahead and review the video of what those parents were saying about me and the cyber stalking people like crystal blow, uh, crystal blowers said.
So, that's when you were recording our students talking, my parents don't appreciate that.
Um, when they've been conditioned to, I've got news footage posted up on my page of this, uh, news stations recording students playing sports games, just like I discussed with you.
Yeah, and that's true.
It is perfectly legal for people, both amateurs and professional news reporters to record footage of public events like sports games. There is nothing sinister or immoral about doing it or asking to work with people so that they feel comfortable. But by law, there's no release and no law prohibiting anyone from doing a public event like that.
But our school day isn't a public event.
You're right, it isn't, so that's the reason I came to the office after they let out to find out the school board information because not all websites are user-friendly. As you know, I'm one of the very few people that actually attend the school board meeting that are not compelled to.
Sure, we have a fair number of attendees at our board meeting, but I do recognize that you're there from time to time.
A fair number, last time through, I was the only one that wasn't, I mean, first time through, I was the only one that wasn't compelled to, not last time, first time, excuse me.
And last month, were you the only one there?
No.
No, yeah.
Yeah, for some reason, I seem to have gotten you some attendance.
Me?
And quite a bit of notoriety.
My social influence or not?
Evidently, you've been, if those parents got that riled up about somebody standing out by the road with a camera. By the way, you might wanna remind crystal blowers, five-year-olds don't typically drive cars.
Okay. And that, I'm, that doesn't seem to be under my purview about who drives and where.
Mm-hmm, nor mine.
Okay.
But if it's visible from a public road, I can video it.
That's your prerogative, if you wanna record children, that's.
Well, considering the fact that everybody else does so legally and they are not harassed, abused, or blackmailed for doing so. As a matter of fact, like I said, I've got news footage right now of a professional news crew recording children playing basketball. One team after another footage of them interviewing the coach.
Yep.
This is called First Amendment protected activity, it is legal.
Think you're, uh, conflating several different.
You are conflating several different things.
Yeah, seems, seems like we are here, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree.
And I've dealt with professional liars before, this isn't my first round.
Very good, no one's lying to you. You just asked for my information, I gave it to you.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a lie.
And you know that when somebody's trying to access information like school board facilities, it's illegal to close a place earlier, demand a person leave on account of having a camera present as long as it's considered a public area of the public facility.
Sure. So, what's, what's your issue, nobody's? Saying anything?
Nobody's saying anything?
No, standing here recording me, so.
Mm-hmm.
Where your issues?
Well, uh, if you mind me asking, I am noticing nobody's giving me a definite time for when office hours are.
You should check your recording, I think you got one.
Okay, so you said it's three forty-five now? Uh, you said that the written sign that I saw outside the school office, uh, stating the school office hours were till four thirty was not accurate?
I think this, if I'm not mistaken, I think it says that we have school in session during those hours, so we do have children in programming during those times.
You have school in session till four thirty now?
Yeah, we have after-school club, so we have.
Well, I took a still of the sign.
It's good.
It said school office.
Good, I'm glad that you have that.
If I remember right.
Could be.
So, um, in other words, if somebody's outside the office, they're in an open part of the school.
As long as the school is accessible at that time, sure.
Yes.
If we're in session though.
So, um, basic.
Hallways of the school when we're in session.
But sitting at the table outside the office while the employees are still there asking about school board information and appointments is still appropriate and legal.
I believe what you're referencing is the time that you came and were asked to leave the premises, is that right?
Solely on account of the camera.
Solely on account of the camera, well, I wasn't there.
Mm-hmm, I was and I took video of it.
Good, then you have a documentation of what happened.
Just like now.
So, I do not know what.
And I've got a documentation of the disparity of the times that you're giving me now.
Good, I'm glad that you have that.
Somehow people that can look so wholesome or anything but.
Okay, I'm glad that you have that. Anything else we can help you with today?
Um, no, but, well, maybe, let me go ahead and observe, I've got the emails of the directors of both facilities. And, yep, Principal Nicole, your contact information. And I'm probably gonna call the day before and the day of to confirm that there's been no cancellations and the time and place, plus, uh, you did mention, rats, I don't have an ink pen. Um, you did mention that there was a meeting, um, the March twenty-fifth one, I believe. Um, five PM Granville, is that the one you were talking about where there'd be food handed out?
I didn't say anything about food handed out, I said that there's a meeting of the board on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
There will be a meal there.
Mm-hmm.
For the board members.
Okay. So, it's not for the public, but are the public allowed to attend the meeting?
You can attend the meeting.
Okay.
But that's not, uh, I mean, there's a catered meal that those attend, and attendants will be paying for.
Mm-hmm.
So, you wouldn't be welcome to.
No, I understand that, but as far as making a record of the meeting.
Sure, you do what you wanna do.
Okay.
It's a public meeting.
Because once this stuff starts going online, it enables the public to make comments about what they're seeing and what they're hearing. Those that are busy or frustrated because they have to be quiet or free now to speak.
Sure. So, what are you frustrated about, Melissa?
Oh, I think you're smart enough to figure it out.
Wow, you've got me stumped thus far.
Okay. Well, I guess you'll have to stay stumped.
Okay.
Perry Mason, I'm not, but even I know where to ask questions.
What's the question?
Are there any more meetings between, uh, March, uh, for the month of March and April that I should know about as far as I, open meetings pertaining to the school facilities or other things as your duty is as superintendent?
No.
Okay, well, that's the last relevant one that I can think of for the moment, um, and I'm in a hurry to meet, uh, meet up with Heather, but.
Oh, Heather who?
It doesn't matter.
You respecting your privacy, I guess.
Possibly. Crying shame those students can't learn from the clock, and it's a crying shame it has to be turned into something potentially hostile for me to ask about that.
Learn from the clock, what do you mean?
It's like I was telling your other board members, those gears that those clocks are based on, they've, it's a centuries-old technology, very precise, and it's the beginning parts of robotics. Well, there's no electronics or computerization involved.
Okay.
It's very much so, uh, important skill for anyone to learn in any form, whether it's just mechanical engineering or whether it involves robotics that are your state curriculum.
Appreciate the time.
Yes, plus, it's a beautiful thing, there's quite a bit to learn from these old clocks if they wanted to rescue them from the dumps, but I understand if you don't feel you have sufficient funding or time or interest. By the way, is that your daughter?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, sorry, remember, I'm face-blind, so this is hard for me, the ta- camera's both an adaptive device regarding my dyslexia but also my inability to remember human faces.
Fascinating, I prefer that you didn't record my child, though.
Uh huh.
You know, she's under the age of eighteen and.
Well.
I don't really know you that well, so.
It doesn't matter.
It does, though, because as an adult, I can protect my child.
You can in theory, but First Amendment law prohibits, uh, gives me the right to do it and it prohibits you from doing anything to me about it. If you attempt to block my camera, I can sue for prior restraint or assault. Your position puts you in the position of being obligated to know and to not counsel people to hurt or harass me.
I'm not doing any of those things.
Okay, then understand, I retain my right to record anyone that's in public.
Okay, very good then.
And I don't, I mean, it is definite discrimination to make inappropriate assumptions about the motives either. Nerve damage is not mental illness and I do have the same right to access public facilities with an adaptive device as any able-bodied person, I am not a lesser human being.
Fairly certain that you're the only one that's addressed any of those topics this evening.
Well, probably, face-blind is not a well-known disorder.
I would agree.
You can look it up at Harvard.
I really don't feel.
Okay. High school student like conferences. Please limit the conference to fifteen minutes per student. It's visible from a public area. Things I'd also like to point out, if this is so creepy, why the hell are there cameras all over the school? I just love being face-blind. Okay, looks like the state tournament for Titan Basketball already happened. And things I'd like to point out, this is yet another bunch of kid photographs they're publicly putting up. In the meantime, I've made myself late getting these informations, but, I get this information, but it's so crucial right now. Things I'd like to point out too, I started with the city hall and I totally intend on doing that. Save a friend, do you know if someone involved with meth or somebody who's dealing with cooking? Meth is the, uh, meth is the medication they gave students that were diagnosed with ADHD or just Attention Deficit Syndrome. I know. I have several disabilities related to nerve damage. Dyslexia and face-blind are especially bad when I'm stressed, but so is the ADHD that I was born with. It's gone into just the Attention Deficit Syndrome after female puberty, but it's still very much there. For safety reasons, leaving it on till I leave school property and secure the, myself in the truck. I'm leaving it on till I leave school property and secure the, myself in the truck. I don't want or need to be threatened or abused. The rage and hostility that they're portraying towards me. This isn't some get, uh, uh, rich quick screen, uh, sc- excuse me, this isn't some get-rich-quick scam or something like that. Even if I can successfully sue them, odds are good the lawyers are going to get the bulk of the money. For me, it's going to be about my rights to do this and not about the money. But it's going to cost me big time. That's funds that should be going towards my sister and her kids. But the living, breathing hell I suffered at school. The abuse I had was enough to know better than turning my mom for the abuse that she was giving me. Because the government facilities were as bad or worse, and this public school gave me a taste of that warning. These are things that are not to be taken lightly. I don't know what to say. I understand the why and the how. Other people would back off and be afraid. I also understand the why and the how. I refuse to back down. And I refuse to be abused. And I better go ahead and pipe down. If you're interested, Harvard, uh, University in Boston, Massachusetts, one among the most prestigious of the Ivy League universities, if not the most prestigious. Their medical school has something on face-blind or propinazia. I did find one other nerve center, uh, one other neurologist in Kentucky that was supposed to be doing a survey, and I contacted both facilities. I want to get a formal diagnosis too, but I want to be very careful as to how I do it because sadly, um, there's a lot of things that can go wrong, among them, the prohibitive cost for traveling over a thousand miles to see a doctor. I'm gonna go ahead and shut down. And yes, I had adaptive devices for my dyslexia. It's a well-known problem I have. And it gets worse with stress.